Thank you everyone, is this on?
No.
Okay. Good evening, is it on now?
Yes.
It's on, great. So... It is October 7th, it is 7:00 PM. I'm calling to order the monthly meeting of the Concord School Board. And our first agenda item is approval of the agenda. And I actually want to make an amendment to the agenda motion to add at the end a non-public session. We may not use that, but in the event that it's needed. So I will make that motion. Can someone make a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by me, seconded by Jim Richards. All in favor of approving the agenda with that amendment? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So the agenda is approved. Our next agenda item is recognitions and reports. At our next monthly meeting, we will be welcoming our student representatives from Concord High School. They are not here this evening, so we do not, I believe, have any other business under that agenda item. So the next agenda item is an update on the investigation and student safety actions that are ongoing in the district. So just wanted to offer a brief report on where we stand with the challenges that are faced right now in the district. We're trying to do three primary things as a district. Operate a district, we have our buses running, we have our teachers teaching, we have our students learning, lunches served, we're fulfilling our educational mission within the community. That is our first and foremost duty. Our second big area of focus right now is making sure that students are safe and that they feel safe in light of the occurrences with Mr. Howie Leong, and ensuring that such things do not happen in the district again. And then our third area of focus right now is regaining the trust of the community. And obviously, these are things that are related, that we've been talking about a lot in recent months. So over the past month, I would say we have made some progress, we've also had some setbacks. So here's where things stand right now. We have received part one of the investigative report by investigator Junea Perkins. That is a report that is looking at the actions of district personnel, who knew what when, how that compared with what was required under policy, is what was done with respect to Mr. Howie Leong when he was employed by the district. So the board has received the report, we received it on September 23rd, we have read it, we have begun taking action on it. There is not a lot we can say about it, what we can say is the report does what we asked, it provides the information that we wanted to have when we had that report, when we entered into the contract for that report. It's meticulous, it's detailed, it shows where there were failures. And with respect to the question of releasing it, we do need to comply with the law with respect to considering its release. And I've asked Attorney Bennett in a little bit to just address the legal considerations associated with releasing or not releasing the report. But we have it, we've read it, we are looking at it, we're reading it, and we will continue to review it, we will continue to take actions that are appropriate. We also want everyone to know that there is a part two of the report that we have not yet received. That part, we absolutely will be making public. We hope that we will get that part of the report soon, and that it will include information that really sheds a light, as we understand there is such a strong interest in knowing what occurred, what went wrong, we understand that, and that part two, I think we'll shed a light on that, and it will be released publicly. That's our intention. The next thing that we have continued to do over the past month, and I think that's been very successful, is our continued work to create a culture of safety and accountability in our schools. And this began with the policy work that we did over the summer, with the training that occurred for all staff members. The focus right now is on reporting, understanding what needs to be reported, how that occurs, what that means. And those conversations are occurring not just with the staff, also with students, it's fully integrated into the curriculum as a conversation, really as a way of ensuring that we're able to live and breathe that culture that we want to have within our schools. So some of the things that have been put into place recently, and we will hear some more specifics about it during the report on the Communications and Policy Committee meetings, are that we have tip boxes at Concord High School, those will also be rolled out in the future at Runlit. We have an online reporting portal that's been rolled out, and again, there have been conversations with students about what these mean, how they are used, and we have continued to work with our community partners, specifically Concord PD and DCYF, around that reporting functionality. And then we're also going to continue working with other community partners as we start focusing on some of the other issues. So that work is ongoing, and we've made a lot of progress. So another area of focus has been on leadership for our schools. The board is seeking an interim superintendent who can serve until the issues have been resolved, but led to Superintendent Forstens being placed on leave. And this is really, really important. We need to have that leadership in our schools going forward, so that we can continue to fulfill our educational mission. So then the last issue over the past month has to do with the certification and the credentialing of district administrators, specifically Donna Pally and Jack Dunn. The board takes these certification issues very seriously, and we will require that all DOE standards are met for all staff. In terms of when we became aware of these issues, I was CC'd on emails from the Department of Education on September 10th and 11th with respect to Donna Pally's certification, and this correspondence gave me the impression that the matter was being resolved, was being worked on with appropriate staff at DOE. At the time that the board placed Superintendent Forsten on leave, I was not aware that the superintendent, I mean that the certification issue with respect to Ms. Pally was not being swiftly and fully resolved. And the board was not aware of the certification issues with respect to Jack Dunn. So at the moment, that issue rests with the Department of Education, and we are committed to doing whatever the Department of Education requires with respect to that certification issue. So now I'm going to ask Attorney Bennett to give a brief update on the report and the legal parameters surrounding its potentially being made public.
Good evening. Good evening. The school board has requested that I explain the school district's response to several requests for the report on Mr. Leong, the former teacher. The purposes of the report, the purposes of the report are, first, to identify what could have been done to prevent Mr. Leong's sexual misconduct. That entail determining what information was known by district employees and when they knew it. The investigation also looked at which district policies and procedures should have been followed, and whether the policies were, in fact, followed by school personnel. The investigator spoke with nearly 60 school employees, a dozen students, their parents, state and local officials. Reports detailing investigations of employee conduct and compliance with employment policies are exempt from the disclosure requirements of the state's right-to-know law as records of internal personnel practices. The U.S. Supreme Court has explained that personnel practices include such matters as hiring and firing, work rules and discipline, compensation and benefits. The personnel practices must be in the context of an employment relationship to be an internal personnel practice. Our Supreme Court requires an investigation into employee misconduct be undertaken by or on behalf of an employer to constitute an internal personnel practice. And our Supreme Court has repeatedly stated that investigations into public employee misconduct are quintessential examples of internal personnel practices. The school district's decision to maintain the confidentiality of this report is consistent with the right-to-know law and court decisions on that law. A policy consideration supporting the exemption is the negative impact publishing personnel investigation results may have on the willingness of employees to come forward to report future misconduct. Public disclosures of personnel reports have resulted in public embarrassment, humiliation, and even retaliation against individuals who are merely witnesses and not wrongdoers. Stifling the reporting of misconduct in the workplace hurts the victims of misconduct, employers, and the public. Public policy considerations also protect the names and other identifying information of students. The right-to-know law exempts student records from disclosure. The Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, known as FERPA, a federal law, also prohibits school districts from disclosing identifying information of students. And that means not only names, but other information which may confirm the identity of a student. It is the school board's opinion that even if the names of individuals were removed from the report, the other information contained in the report would allow for the identification of school district employees and students who were involved in the investigation, as well as their individual roles in the events being investigated. The board believes that such a result would be inconsistent with the right-to-know law, and that such disclosures could be harmful to individuals who have done nothing wrong. The second purpose for conducting the investigation was to identify any failures or weaknesses in current school district policies and practices. That may have contributed to a delay in discovering and stopping Mr. Leong's misconduct. The school board will be receiving the second report from the investigator, which will identify any weaknesses in policy and practice, and make recommendations to strengthen them to ensure a safer school environment. The report will be released to the public once the school board has had time to review it. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Bennett. And again, to reiterate, we truly understand the public interest in the information in the report. I think this illustrates the challenging situation that we find ourselves in with respect to our obligation to comply with the law in considering whether or not to release it. So it's a challenging situation, and we look forward to receiving the second part, because I do think that that will shed a light on what happened, and we want the public to be able to have some understanding of what happened, we think that is appropriate. So...
Could I just add one thing?
Yep.
Well, the number one thing is student safety. So that's what we're going to let Captain take care of. We have to make sure at the end of everything, we're all here for the students, you're all here for your kids, you're here for the students, we're here for the students. So student safety, I just have to add, is first and foremost, and we can't take our eye off that ball.
Great, thank you Chuck. Thank you Chuck. So that concludes my update. The next topic on the agenda is public comment on agenda items. We understand the public interest in the issues of the report and the situation that we face, so we will take public comment on anything relating to that at this time, we were not saving that to the end of the agenda as we did last time. We do have a policy on public participation, and again, those of you who have spoken before are aware of it. We have, you know, the primary purpose of our meeting is to conduct the business of the board. We encourage attendance, we encourage participation in the meetings. Persons appearing before the board are reminded that members of the board are without authority to act independently, thus questions may be directed to individual board members, but answers must be deferred pending consideration by the full board. We encourage the submission of written comments, and we allocate five minutes per person for public comment, and we have a timekeeper, I believe, do we have a timekeeper? So Matt Cashman will be keeping time, and he will indicate how, Matt? Do you have something you'll hold up?
Yes, I'll tie myself.
Okay, so he'll hold something up, I think, when there's one minute left, and then when time is up, just so people can stay within their limits. And I'll say, in past meetings, people have been very, very respectful of the time limit, so thank you, and I appreciate that. So are there people wishing to make public comment? If so, we have a sign-in sheet. Please write your name down, and just let's make sure the microphone is picking you up. Sometimes we've had some challenges with that, but...
I'm already signed up.
Please come forward.
Very competitive, number one.
Don't start till I start. My name is Elizabeth Hodley, I'm better known by... No?
I think it may work best to take it out of the holder.
Oh, you have to turn it on? How about this? No? Help! Help! Try that, hold it right up.
Right up there.
There you are.
There we go. My name is still Elizabeth Hodley, and you all know me by the name of Betty. I'm a traditionalist. I am going to give input on agenda items, two, ever so briefly. However, I will remind you of the first one. It comes when your HR person starts talking about hiring a JV hockey coach. Now, two of you weren't here, but a year or so ago, there were people here when the Instructional Committee passed an edict or an extension, so the JV hockey for boys was added. But the caveat was that the parents of those hockey people, both with JV and varsity, were going to make up the revenue that needed to be done in order to make this a revenue-neutral situation. And I can remember the chair of the Instructional Committee, not you, but the previous one, who kept saying, "Revenue-neutral, revenue-neutral, revenue-neutral." And I said, "Well, I hope they heard it, I heard it," because that money needs to be billed, and that money needs to be collected. And guess what? Although it's the finance director's job, it's also yours, those of you who knew it. All right? Secondly, on October 28th, this is now related to schedule of meetings. On October 28th, you have a series of meetings. At 5:30, you will vote on the bond resolution, and I attended the meeting the other night, where it seemed like it came out of committee with a full vote, and there were not only four committee members there, but three as well, and the other two could not make it. So you've all heard about bonding and rebonding, and the idea that if you can find a better rate, for heaven's sakes, do it. Whether it's your car, your house, your wife, no, you don't want your wife, your bonds for school buildings, or whatever. And then at 5:45, you're going to have the final meeting on the FY '20 budget. Okay, you all remember that last spring, you passed a budget that had to be done in order to do the appropriation in order to hire teachers. All right? Now's the time that you finalize the budget, and when it gets finalized, it works its way through to Department of Revenue Administration, so that they can come up with a new tax rate, at which you time you will be billed on January, and then again in March. Your rate when you did this in March was astounding, I almost fell off the chair, because you know, I'm always in here complaining about your rate per thousand. Your rate in the spring was about one-third of your average over the last six years. Well, I find that a very healthy trend, and so I implore you, I beg you, I plead with you, when you meet on October 28th, please do not take and raise that figure. In fact, if you could lower it, I bring you some pizza or some ice cream or something, because we need to reverse that trend. And I'll close with a little story. A month ago, when we met, I tried to subtly get out of here, and so I went out a door over there somewhere, which I thought would take me back to the vicinity of my car in the handicap part of the parking lot. Well, no, lo and behold, it didn't. After stumping around out on the playground, I found that I was locked in, and you were locked out, and I had visions of spending the night at the Millbrook Playground and sleeping where I don't know. Well, fortunately, there was a very kind janitor, who was not unhappy when I knocked on the window and pleaded to get in. Not only did he show me in, but he showed me all the way out to the door, wanted to walk me to his car, and I assured him that although I am an octogenarian, I surely could find my car, in fact, I could see it. But I'll tell you, I was mighty glad to get home. Five minutes? Six? Seven? You're not going to kill me. No, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now what do I do to this?
Put it right down.
Put it right down, leave it alone.
Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment?
Good evening, my name is Max Schultz, I live here in Concord. I'm also running for the school board in District B. I have a couple things to say, and first, I understand the difficulty of the investigation, the employee rights, and that sort of thing. I think it's important, though, that you consider with the totality of the things that have been happening, that you may seriously want to consider an outside agency for a performance audit of the administration. Because you really need to take a look at, not just, you know, how and why, but how to prevent this from happening, because it seems like there's just a series, a train of things that keep coming, which really is like a systemic problem. If you have a performance audit, then maybe you could take some measures to try and prevent this in the future. So if hiring practices weren't proper, and people are hired without the proper certifications, and it goes on for years, I mean, as an administrator myself in public safety, I understand, you know, I hire people that are police officers, there's certifications, there's, you know, training that's required, I get audited, I keep those records forever, I mean, you have to follow those procedures. Education is extremely important, and people that are in charge of administration for education is extremely important, and people need to be qualified, certified, and it should not be under the carpet somewhere. So my opinion is, there needs to be a serious look at an audit of some sort, so that you all know, you can't be there every day, obviously, you can't know everything day-to-day, you have a lot of trust in people that you hire. So just from my perspective, you really need to consider an audit from an outside agency that can really tell you where you need to go.
Thank you for your comments, and may I say, I forgot to say at the outset, that we have directed the Director of Personnel to initiate an audit. We've looked at our administrators, and we will continue to look and make sure there are no anomalies, and thank you, we will consider the possibility of that as well. So thank you.
Good afternoon, thank you so much for being on the board. It's not always an easy job, and especially lately, and I appreciate what you do. This is more of a question than a comment.
Excuse me, if you could identify yourself?
Deborah Harris. I did, sorry, on the paper, but, and I live here in Concord, and I have a child, three children who have gone through public education. It was stated that the SAU was going to hire a compliance officer, and my question really is, who is this compliance officer going to answer to? Was it going to be to the administration or to the school board?
I'm not sure what you're referencing in terms of a compliance officer, I think we talked about an interim superintendent.
There was something in the paper that said that you were going to hire, or that we got an announcement saying that there was going to be a compliance officer?
I think, I think that maybe that was a reference to the audit that we have asked the Director of Personnel to conduct into the certification status of all staff. So I don't believe there was an announcement about the hiring of someone for that.
Okay, but I would look at that, and when we're talking about audits, I would suggest, based on what's going on, maybe it should be biannual, like every two years, we should go through some kind of audit, not just about personnel, but also about any other policies and procedures, are they being followed, and rules and regulations? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Darlene Gilbert-Sleeve. As you know, Hopkinton has a contract with Concord to send our students over, thus my extreme concern over the safety of all students, Hopkinton, Concord, and every sending district. The investigative report is fully funded with taxpayer dollars, therefore, it is a public document. I ask that you immediately give the report to the Concord Police and the Attorney General. It is obvious, very serious things, perhaps criminal, are contained in the report, otherwise you wouldn't have put the superintendent and Tom Sika on leave, correct? A redacted version to protect students' names should then be issued to the public, but if you care about student safety, the police and the Attorney General will get that report immediately. I am being told of very disturbing special education issues in the Concord School District, and have found due process lawsuits against the district going back to 2011 and earlier. By not putting students first in their rights to a free and appropriate public education, parents have had to file special education complaints at the Department of Education, file Office of Civil Rights complaints, and go through expensive due process lawsuits. Myself, I'm a parent of two with disabilities, and this is not acceptable at all. The district uses taxpayer dollars to pay for the lawsuits to fight the parents of children with disabilities. Taxpayer dollars are funding this. Thousands and thousands of dollars per case. Please do the right thing and conduct a top-to-bottom investigation of special education practices, starting with the director down, so that these kids can have the justice and the special education services required by federal and state law. I heartily recommend the formation of a district and parent special education partnership. We just did that in Hopkinton, there's one in Merrimack, Pelham, Hudson, Hollis. These are sanctioned by the Parent Information Center of New Hampshire. They actually will come in and provide training, and help the parents and the district work collaboratively to launch the initiative. There are several issues that I'm hearing about firsthand, where children are not getting what they need without a struggle, and that needs to change, and that needs to end now, starting with the director going down. Lastly, all district administrators and staff that require certification by the Department of Education must have their credentials current. I was an investment professional, I had my Series 7, 6, and 63. If I did not have my license, my boxes would have been packed, and my butt would have been out the door. It's unacceptable that eight years has gone... It's unacceptable that eight years has gone by, and somebody that was in charge of supervising others' credentials themselves did not have a credential. Totally unacceptable. My group protect Concord children now. Therefore, call for the resignation of Donna Pauley immediately. If she should not do the right thing and resign, the board should do the right thing and terminate her. You are setting an example for all the staff in Concord to lastic daysically not get their credentials because their boss doesn't. There's no incentive for them. So I'm asking, Donna, do the right thing, resign. Do the right thing. It's been eight years. You had enough time. Graduating from UNH in 2020, as I read in your interview with the Concord Monitor, is not acceptable.
It looks like your time is up. No, thank you very much.
Do the right thing. And Donna Pauley, your time is up, too.
Are there others wishing to make public comment?
Hi, my name is Andrea Goldman, and I sent all of you emails. And my letter to the editor was cut down to 250 words from the email that I sent to each of you individually about during the swamp of the corruption in the Concord School District. I hope you all read my email. If not, it's in the newspaper as a letter to the editor today. So I'd like to address personally Donna Pauley right now. I spoke with you on the phone last week because I wanted to speak to you personally about, and hear from you about you not having credentials, and I wanted you to explain yourself about that. And while we were on the phone, I told you that I work as a vet tech at a veterinary facility. I asked you, if I didn't have proper certification to take care of a pet, would you take your pet to my facility? You said absolutely not. On the same token, why should I feel comfortable sending my children to a school where you're not credentialed to care for them properly? It is no different. No different. It has been eight years. I can't work at my job for eight years and get paid $134,000 a year without taking the proper time to go to school to learn what I need to learn to do my job properly. Taxpayers should not be paying for your salary when you didn't even take the time to get your credentials. Now is the time for you to resign. Are you going to do the right thing and resign?
I think that's not a question that needs to be answered right now.
Okay. I am done. Thank you.
Is there other public comment?
Yes.
Hi again. So first, I want to say that in the meeting minutes...
If you could identify yourself.
Elizabeth Gerard. I'm actually getting to that. If you waited. In the meeting minutes from last time, and my name was spelled incorrectly, so that needs to be amended, and I spoke to you for five minutes, and what you wrote in that report was unbelievable. That's what you got out of everything that I said, and that's what was put in the report? Are you kidding me? Give me a break. Also, a former Patriots player was arrested on campus in May, violating a restraining order and was arrested in front of students, and there was no letter to parents. That's a safety issue. Why was it hidden? Don't we have the right to know if somebody's being arrested on our campus? In addition, how did the Human Resources Director not know Concord was not following state laws? How did the people lacking credentials, Donna? You had eight years. You literally had eight years. That's absurd. Who does this? The school board needs to fire these people effective immediately. I am baffled that all of you would keep staff. And how did you people not even know? Like, your Human Resources Director doesn't go to you and be like, well, this person's lacking this, this person's lacking that. Because I've worked in companies, and I've worked in nonprofits, and we all knew who needed credentials and who didn't. And she had eight years. This is a joke. Further, a judge in a case, in another case, has requested the report. That report will become public record. You need to release that report, fully, unredacted. A judge has literally asked you guys to release that report. And once something is released, it is public.
There is a second comment here at the end of our agenda as well, so not seeing a lot of people coming forward now, there will be another opportunity for folks if they don't come in now.
Hello. My name is David Parker. As you know, I've come before this board before. I'm haring a different tenor, and I appreciate that. I know I've been really hard on you guys, but I know you've listened. And I do believe you're going to do the right thing. When doing the right thing, I think you need to look beyond yourself. To me, when I see this, I see sometimes a lack of skill set. I don't see a lack of experience, a lack of professionalism, a lack of caring. You all have that. But there's some systemic issues that you guys really do need to deal with. You care about kids, there's no doubt. You know, you're public servants, and you care. And when I sit in the back and I watch and I listen, I think initially, you're really closed and you're really arrogant. And that really upset me. And I think historically, in the past 10 years, the board has been insular. The administration has been insular, not looking out there to see what best practices are. We're better than this in Concord, New Hampshire. I've said this before, we are better than this. And I believe in Concord, and I believe in all of you. But I hear a different tenor, and I really appreciate it. So let's knock this down, let's get it worked out, and let's move forward and continue to provide the best education we can for the kids in Concord. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there others wishing to comment at this time? So seeing none, we will move forward with our agenda. And next agenda item is approval of board minutes. So we have the minutes of our regular monthly meeting, September 3rd, on pages 3 through 13. Are there amendments to those? I believe Mr. Richards has an amendment.
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment to the minutes of the September 3rd meeting. In that meeting, and specifically on page 10 of 11 of the minutes, one of the citizens who made public comment informed me, and I apologize to him. His name is Tom Madson, M-A-D-S-O-N. And it was written and reported as Madison. So I would like to make a motion to correct that. And once again, I apologize to Mr. Madison. It was not intentional.
Great. Did we get that? Great. Thank you, Jim. Any other amendments to the minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Crowdo.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Kane. Oh, sorry. Seconded by Higgins. Sorry. There were multiple seconds. Yes.
Did we need to clarify, was there another clarification? Because I thought someone came forward.
Yes, Ms. Gerard. I was trying to find...
G-I-R-A-R-D.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Do you know what page that's on?
Yeah. I found it somewhere.
Oh, I see. And I think maybe we didn't know the spelling. G... Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this on page 8 of 11, page 10 of the board book. Okay. So with those two amendments, all in favor of approving the minutes indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the minutes are approved. And then next...
Apologize, Mr. Richards.
Yes, and we apologize to Mr. Gerard. Next are the minutes of our September 11th board meeting. This was for purposes of reviewing the loan resolution and setting the date, place, and time for a public hearing on the bond resolution. Are there any amendments to those minutes?
Shouldn't be.
Seeing none, is there a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Richards.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Crowdo. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So those minutes are approved. And then next, we have the minutes of the special board meeting, September 30th, public hearing on the bond refinancing. And are there any amendments to those minutes? So seeing none, is there a motion to approve them? Mr. Crush?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Crowdo. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we have approved all of our minutes. So next on the agenda is personnel, and I will turn it to Mr. Prince for some coach nominations. And yes, if you could grab the mic, that would be great.
Thank you. We have four nominations for coaches, all at the middle school for the fall season. Michelle Bartlett as the Assistant Cross Country Coach, a stipend of $1,025. Catherine Ferrari, Field Hockey A, Field Hockey A coach, with a stipend of $2,356. Cara Gilson, Field Hockey B coach, with a stipend of $2,142. And Kevin Parsons as a girls' soccer A coach at $2,356.
Are there any questions with this? Mr. Crush?
Just because it's top of manning, just because I have no knowledge of coaching, teaching certifications, do they have the appropriate endorsement certifications for they have to?
They do not. They do not need to have... Excuse me. Excuse me. They do not need to be certified.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the coaching nominations?
Are they required to have background checks?
Are they required to have background checks? Yes, they are.
Good question. Thank you.
What was the question?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
They asked if the background checks had been done?
Yes, the background check has been done.
So is there a motion to approve these coaching nominations?
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Moved by Mr. Crush.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Kane. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the coaching nominations are approved. Thank you, Ms. Prince. So next on the agenda are reports from the Communications and Policy Committee. The Communications and Policy Committee met on September 9th in non-public session to hear a grievance, so that is the end of that report. The committee also met on September 16th to consider a number of policies. The central one that we'll be having a bit more of a discussion of tonight will be the policy on reporting child abuse and neglect. That was one that we had done a substantial amount of work on over the summer and that we actually had adopted. And the challenge that was posed with the language that was adopted was that it was resulting in double notifications to DCYF. There would be a report from the staff member, who was an obligate reporter based on what they had observed, and then a second report from the building principal, and that was something that was discussed with DCYF. And there was a substantial amount of discussion among the committee as to what should we do, how should we change that language? And we had asked administration to engage in some subsequent conversations, both with the police department and DCYF, to see what their recommendations were and what would be consistent with their process and not result in redundant reports that were not necessary in the view of the agencies. So I think the language that was recommended after those discussions is contained on page 31 and 32 of the board book. And I think we have Ms. Pauley here who can give further background on those conversations if board members have questions about it. But why don't we see, I think, Mr. Crush, you were one of the people who had questions during that meeting.
I have a question. Sorry. Sorry, everybody. Thank you, Ms. Patterson. Clarification, just for the purposes of the minutes, page 30, we talked about student relations. Let me kind of walk us back a little bit, but just while I have the microphone. Policy 437, we talked about having students engage in that. I had made comments that I was disappointed in the administration that that did not occur at this point. So I would like that noted, please.
That was my question. Thank you.
Oh, okay. That was a different... I haven't gotten to that part in the report.
All right, sorry. Maybe I'll leave that.
So I know that we did have a discussion, just to jump to that.
Okay.
We could definitely change the way that we approach...
And I can help.
That we approach the minutes. But my recollection of the committee's discussion was that we wanted to wait to bring forward some of these policies, and specifically the employee-student relations policy, until after some discussion could take place, because we want to encourage students. So I think what we could do is note that Mr. Crush had voiced that concern, because it's attributing it to me, and I'm happy to attribute it to you.
You may have it.
That sounds consistent with my recollection. And again, as I mentioned at the outset, these conversations are occurring in a variety of mechanisms and will continue over the next month at the high school in a manner that is really aimed at engaging as many students as possible in that conversation, through the advisories, through an actual kind of curriculum-based discussion, so that it's not just a small subset of students, but actually a conversation that's happening throughout the schools. And so we will wait to hear how those conversations go, probably before we make any changes to those policies. Because that...
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
So my comment about that is that, after our training, we kind of expected that there would be a real influx of reporting. And so to hear from Division of Child Youth and Families that they're getting a lot of calls and they're getting redundant calls because we are in a system of double-checking ourselves at this point, I don't know if that's a bad problem to have at this point. I think that it kind of says, you know, what we ask staff to do... I think that it kind of says, you know, what we ask staff to do is working. And get those things out there, let DCYF make the decision if it's reportable or not. And hopefully, the process will continue in a positive way.
Great, thank you, Mr. Crowdo. So if we could, I thought, let's talk about this policy, and then we can continue with the report. And I do have some further information I can share if board members are interested in the details of what is occurring with respect to the reporting and the training and the education around these issues in our schools. So are there any thoughts on this language? What we would like to do is to bring it forward for amendment tonight before the board, because that was the strong message that we received from DCYF and the police department. And specifically, on page 32, it would be striking this language about once the principal building supervisor receives the information, the law would impose a reporting requirement upon both the original reporter and the principal. And basically, it would stand on the language that remains and is not being stricken, which says that upon receiving the report request from the employee volunteer or other person who had made the report, the building, the principal building supervisor is responsible for immediately assuring that DCYF has been notified. So that would not involve a second report, but they would have to assure that that notification had been made. And that was the language that was preferred by DCYF and law enforcement.
Thank you. So we've been in contact with people in leadership with DCYF and the police department. We had it documented, and it's good. I just want to make sure that we have, have something documented for clarification.
Yeah, and I asked Ms. Pally to do her study, because she attended that meeting. But that, I think, Ms. Pally, was the clear statement that we received from Concord PD and DCYF, correct?
Yeah. Is it? I'm sorry. Is it? I'm sorry. To be a pain. Is it a written or verbal statement?
We have the results of the meeting, documentation of the meeting that was held with five DCYF supervisors and the chief and two other officers from the police department. And so we have those records of those meetings and specifically what was asked of us there.
And they reviewed this language?
Yes, we had this language, and it was reviewed specifically.
I think it's also important to note here that there are three pieces of information that precedes what we're talking about right this second, that actually came from the work this summer and from the committees that we talked about and have talked with this summer. And that was essentially, if I can summarize a little bit, to take the principal out of the, out of the figure in terms of having to say yea or nay that this report goes forward. And we have successfully done that. The initial report to the building principal or supervisor may be made, may be made prior to the report to DCYF, but only if the initial report is made for the purpose of seeking assistance. And then it goes on to say the reporting principle doesn't necessarily, will not cause any undue delay. So I think we've captured what we heard from you folks this summer, and thank you for that.
Thank you. So I'm going to make a motion that the board approve the changes to Concord School District Policy 432 as reflected on pages 31 through 33 of the board book.
I will second that motion.
So moved by me. Seconded by Mr. Crush. Any further discussion of that issue?
So obviously, a big problem in recent events is that things weren't followed through on or done. So is there a way that people have acknowledgement that a principal or a building administrator or the person in authority has made a report? Or if they're not the ones that have to make it, if I just want to be clear that we say these things, but how do we know that that's actually what's going to happen?
No, thank you for that question. And I think that part of the discussion, when we discussed the revision of the policy with the community, was to make it as specific as possible, that so people could be held accountable. And I think that this actually makes it clearer rather than less clear. I think the earlier version, there was a lack of clarity about responsibility for making the initial report. And this makes it clear that, as is consistent with the law, the person who observes whatever it is that triggers the need to make the report is responsible for making it. The principal would only be involved in making that report if the person, for whatever reason, comes to the principal for assistance with making the report. Then, once the report has been made, that person makes a report to the principal of that fact, who then the principal confirms that it has been made. And then there's a further report by the principal to the superintendent to ensure that there is knowledge being passed on within the district. So I think that it's clearer and that it supports enforcement inconsistency. That's certainly the intention. And again, this policy is in effect now. We had already adopted it. We're just making that clarification. Any other discussion of this policy? Seeing none, all in favor of adopting it as amended, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the amended policy is adopted. So just going back quickly to that meeting, we did also discuss the code of student conduct, the employee-student relations. And the employee-student relations in particular was one that we really felt that we should have further input from both employees and students. So I think that that will occur before it is brought forward. So is there an interest in hearing an update on some of the work that's been ongoing within the schools? I do have some information if board members would like to share it or Ms. Pally could speak to that, if there are questions about it.
I would want a brief.
So in terms of training of adults, we know that we did train all staff. The adults are being trained in the new policies with the focus right now on reporting. So there was initial training in large groups. Then there was also smaller group training, either at the faculty level or the grade level, with opportunities for discussion and questions. Volunteers have also been trained. Two hundred were trained in person last week, and there are more sessions scheduled throughout the month. A plan has been set up to offer the training to all employees and volunteers as they begin work. So HR will be offering these workshops. And again, I think know-and-tell and other trainings on a regular basis throughout the year. As Ms. Pally mentioned, there was a lengthy meeting with five DCYF supervisors, Chief Osgood, and two other members of the police department to talk about these reporting issues and how to collaborate in terms of communicating information. And there will be a follow-up meeting that Chief Osgood and two of his officers will have with district administrators next week to talk about issues around safety and to develop collaborative processes. And this will give administrators the opportunity to ask questions and to support the best practices in working together on behalf of students. There'll also be a second follow-up with the DCYF supervisors that will enable them to come in and meet with faculty to talk about processes and procedures for keeping students safe. In terms of students, all of our schools worked with students in the opening days to ensure safety, to talk about encouraging connections with trusted adults, to support the idea of seeing something and saying something in the elementary schools. Students worked in larger groups and at grade and classroom levels. And children's literature that was age-appropriate was used to support these ideas and themes. At the middle school and high school, the district has developed see-something, say-something, online tip-reporting mechanisms. We've purchased tip-boxes that have been installed at Concord High School and I believe at Runlet or are about to be installed at Runlet. And then at the high school, a curriculum has been developed around reporting for students. And this is being implemented during class time. It includes a video, lessons, scenarios for students to process, and input cards for student responses. In terms of faculty, specifically at the high school, there have been a number of discussions at faculty meetings. The first two faculty meetings were focused on this, even above and beyond the district training that occurred. There was also a reach out to clubs that brought together a small group of students for a focus group in late August around safety. The administrative team created a video regarding the specifics of reporting, which will be used during advisory this week. And then in the faculty meeting on October 3rd, the entire faculty was asked to brainstorm ways that they suggest that students can have more of a voice in the building. And over a hundred ideas were shared and suggested, which are being sorted for themes and categories and further action going forward. The administrative team at the high school has coined the wording of your CHS voice as the terminology to focus the effort to activate students around all aspects of school experience, so safety and beyond. Going forward in October and November, there will be more videos that will be used through the advisories on two of the three major new policy themes. So harassment, bullying, and teacher-student relations. So the focus is on getting student involvement and voices in the process. Each video will have an exit card online where students can request to be part of a larger or more intimate discussion on the issue, as well as to confidentially submit questions and concerns. On October 3rd, the tip-concern mailboxes were installed in four locations near Commons A, B, and D, as well as the CRTC. And their locations will be officially shared on the school-wide video on reporting. And the online form for reporting is just about finalized. Working to refine the process to make sure that all of the messages are received and processed every school day. At Runlet, similarly, the school is setting up information stations around their reporting boxes. School counselors are developing lesson plans that they will teach to their respective grade levels on safety, reporting, and associated topics. And then the lessons will be followed up in advisory classes. And information connected to this student work will also be shared with parents so that they can have discussions at home. And again, at Runlet, they're looking into several curriculum resources that support student social-emotional learning with connections to these topics. And this focus will continue throughout the entire school year at Runlet. So that's the update that I've got right now.
Before I ask my question, I'd like to say a lot of great work. So in a relatively short period of time. So thank you to all involved. Just really two questions. One is, and I'm sure with the faculty, with the adults, with the staff, we document, we have a sign-in sheet, I'm assuming, and we have record of who's attended the trainings and everything. In regard to the Okay. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Larry. In regard to the students, and I don't have an answer of how to do this or a best way, is there a way that we are ensuring that we don't miss a student, that someone does fall through the cracks, that a kiddo who, you know, may have some challenges and may not be at school that frequently? Is there a way that we're ensuring that? Like I said, I don't have the answer.
I don't have the answer, but Ms. Pally, do you have any information on that?
It's a mandate for us. It's our expectation at the high school. That's why they're, for instance, next week, working during Period III class instead of advisory. So to make sure, because Period III is a class where we could capture a lot of kids at that time of day. So they're working hard to make sure they universally design opportunities for everyone.
Understood. Understood it, but we don't document it anyway. So what, like, by student, I guess is my question. And I'm not saying we shouldn't. I'm just asking the question.
Well, we have attendance records in terms of who was there.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
If I could, I'd just like to follow up. Chuck mentioned it very briefly, but I'm going to say it in a little bit more detail. This is good work, really good programs that carry through the whole year. Very happy to see that. I would like to thank, on behalf of the board, if I may, all of the folks from the Concord Crisis Center, the Coalition Against Domestic Violence, the other folks who were here a lot during the summer, the teachers, administrators, staff, and students who have embraced this program. I want to thank everyone for their input. The success of this depends on all of us working together. And I just want to express my appreciation to the community especially. Thank you.
Thank you. Definitely. I think the entire board agrees.
Absolutely.
So thank you. Any other comment on this work? Okay, well, seeing none, that concludes my report on communications and policy. So our next agenda item is the report on the Finance Committee meeting on September 30th. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Crowdo.
This report will be the highlight of the night. So on September 30th, we had a meeting of the Finance Committee. And the purpose of the meeting was to review and finalize our 2020 budget and then to take a look at the fiscal year 2019 budget as well, which, by the way, had as Mr. Dunn, I immediately turned the meeting over to Mr. Dunn, our financial person. And he talked about a unreserved fund balance of around $252,365. And you'll see how that makes makes a little more sense as we move forward here in this report. We had about $305,077 in unused, encumbered money, which contributed to that, that figure that I just gave you. He noted that the, Mr. Dunn noted that the city valuations come in from the city in this month, in October, and that this gives this board the opportunity to revisit our budget, which we do every year in October. He uses the term "real growth", and he talked about a projected city valuation or real growth of a tax rate for our local about $13.64 per thousand, or about 1.79%. Which you heard Mrs. Hoadley very lovely spoke to, that being wonderful, earlier. The tax rate from the state, which is a fixed amount, is $2.13 per thousand, or about .47 cents. And the tax rate for local and state combined is $15.77 per thousand. We do take these unreserved fund balances, and we do put them into various reserve accounts. We have an instructional account, a health risk account, energy, facilities renovations, special education, and tech innovations. And we have totals in those reserves of about $6,445,000. And those dollars get spent in those areas whenever we have a need. And for instance, last year, we appropriated a certain amount to renew our technology amount, because we know that that's going to be an ongoing expenditure that benefits all of our kids and our staff as well. Mr. Crush had mentioned, you know, is there any particular holds on that $252,365? Is there any way that we can't spend that? And and those funds, but the, this would be put into a contingency and And those funds, but the, this would be put into a contingency, and our current budget requires that we have $1.7 million from the prior fiscal year to meet all of our obligations. And any amount over that $1.7 million without board action of at least two-thirds, or seven votes, will resent in a decrease of the local tax rate. So Mr. Dunn reviewed the items of concern to consider for both expenses and revenue over the course of this coming budget, which we will begin the process in quicker than later. Our expenses that are of particular note are utilities, which we all face, everyone in the room, for both electrical and natural gas. Snow removal, unfortunately, the Farmers Almanac and others have just come out recently and said that we're going to have more snow than usual this year, and that's, I'm sure, made Mr. Dunn's worm a little bit.
When wild.
When wild, right. Out-of-district tuition and transportation, those are pretty much fixed. Homeless transportation, transfer to facilities and renovation trust fund and equipment. Just a note that came up the other night, we have dishwashers at both Broken Ground and Krista McCullough that we had to replace this year. And these, as Mr. Dunn indicated, are not your basic $800 or $900 household dishwashers, they are in the thousands of dollars. So anyway, we know that we're going to potentially have a hit of about $1 million in revenue from Medicaid. And if that's not correct, Mr. Dunn, go correct me, I'm sure. However, we moved that the Finance Committee recommend to this full board by an action of 4-0 for its consideration at the special board meeting Monday, October 28th, as previously noted, to finalize this budget. So that is our recommendation to the full board.
And thank you very much. And so my understanding is, we're not considering that until we know what the tax rate is?
Right.
So we're not voting on that recommendation yet? We'll vote on it at that meeting?
Right. Thank you if I misspoke.
No, I don't think you did. I think you spoke perfectly, I just wanted to make sure I understood. Is that correct, Jack?
That's correct.
Okay. Can I ask a question? Yes. So what we know, do we know about the state budget and impact on the Concord?
We have gotten the numbers, and because of the $1 million and those numbers, we'd feel more comfortable if we had a meeting on October 23rd of the Friday, with the Finance Committee. I don't like going into the night you have to vote, giving you, you know, the amount of the $1 million, as I said, we're going to put it on your radar at that meeting. But some of that stuff is looking more and more realistic. So we want to get a better picture, and also give you options that night, what's good, what you don't really want to consider. So then when we go into the night of the 28th, you have some options. It's not, you have to do everything right now. We want to ease it.
No? Thank you, Jack, and that makes sense. And we'll take that up when we get to the calendar of meetings, but sounds like a good idea. Other questions on the Finance Committee meeting or report? All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Ferro, and that will be an exciting meeting on the 28th, it always is. Okay, so our next agenda item is a report on the Instructional Committee meeting of October 2nd, and I will turn it over to Pam Wicks.
Thank you. The Instructional Committee met on October 2nd, and this was a, the presentation that I've been waiting for for a long time, and I was really excited to have with us some of our preschool and kindergarten teachers from the Millbrook School, and Lori Hart from our family centers. We started off with a presentation from Lori Hart on family center, and she talked about the relationships with our community's youngest learners, getting to know families from birth to age five before they enter our school district, and making those connections, and doing home visits. And we now have family centers in all five of our, in five locations, not in every school of my --
Every area.
Every area. So we have one out down in the Heights, we have one at Millbrook, we have one at Abbott Downing, and Krista McCullough in Beaver Meadow.
That's all?
So --
That is all?
Well, except for the other big -- But yes. So it's really exciting, because this is an opportunity for us to get to know our families before they come into our schools. We can connect them with Head Start, with all kinds of community resources if they need them. And it's just, it's where I got my start in this community, and so it's a program that's really close to my heart. So it's really exciting to see how it's taken off since I started eight years ago when my kids were babies, babies in preschool and kindergarten. So we then moved on to talk about our preschool program, which is a developmental preschool program, and they gave an overview of how they, how students are referred to their program, how, you know, it's a mix of typical students and students that are identified with special needs, and how, and they did stress how much, they wish that they could have unlimited amount of students in the programs, but they are busting at the seams and can no longer accept any students, and they are on a wait list. We talked about how they are introducing curriculums to teach calming and self-regulating. They have a new program called Dinosaur School that's a play-based curriculum. It helps teach routines, emotional management, friendship skills, and problem solving. And it involves dinosaur puppets that are really cute and adorable, and they showed us some pictures of some of their spaces where students can go if they need to take a break, or just have a minute to, you know, check themselves, and then come back when they've, when they're feeling better and ready to learn. So that was really exciting. And then, we then heard from our kindergarten teachers, and we started with a presentation from a kindergarten teacher who had been previously teaching half-day and is now teaching full-day, and how she was excited to have more time to get to know her students, instead of having 40 students to get to know in half of the amount of time. She has 20 students that she gets to spend all day with, and she's noticed a big difference in being able to build those relationships with, you know, a smaller number of students for a longer period of time. She did notice that, she did note that, you know, the students were tired at first, but they have really worked hard to develop programming that gives kids lots of breaks, lots of outside time, lots of play, and they're integrating their curriculum into play centers where the learning is continuing all throughout the day. And they don't even really know it. The best part of the meeting came at the end, when we got to see the data, because bringing full-day kindergarten to Concord was, you know, it took a little bit, and a lot of research, and a lot of meetings, and a lot of hard work from a lot of people, and a lot of input. But the data was astounding to see how significantly increases in letter sound and fluency, and the Fanta-Simpanel results were from half-day students through to full-day students. I think the numbers were somewhere from like the 40% to 85% proficient within the half-year results. So it was really exciting to see that all the hard work that went into bringing full-day kindergarten to our school district is paying off in dividends, and it will be interesting to follow these numbers as we continue on seeing these kids who are our first full-day kindergarten class when they get to third grade, when the research has said that there's a tendency for students to fall off. We're hopeful that that won't happen, so. Any questions?
No.
Oh, okay.
So I shared this at the meeting, and I feel that in a time where our district is being heavily scrutinized, and rightfully so, I need to point out the amazing things that happen with early childhood education. So I have two daughters, one's in heaven, but Gracie's significantly learning disabled, went to the Concord Developmental Preschool. I went and sent her at the suggestion of a friend who talked about the reverse mainstreaming. So I sent Gracie, who said not one word for three and a half years, and her first full sentence was Patty loves you. And that's because Patty, her wonderful teacher's aide in the preschool, sat her on her lap every day and read her books while Gracie trembled, and she said Patty loves you. So I'd say, Gracie, how was school today? Patty loves you, mommy. Patty loves you. Gracie, Molly goes two years later, IQ of 160, multiplying things in her head at age six. Neither of them recall their preschool experience any different. Gracie didn't feel inferior or labeled, Molly didn't feel superior or better. It was a phenomenal experience for both of my children on either end of the spectrum. So all through Gracie's school time, wonderful teachers, wonderful support, excellent IEPs that were followed well. A tragedy in high school, and Gracie's culminating act her senior year was to speak in front of an entire memorial field at graduation, giving her memory chair speech. This is a girl that said nothing for like three months of preschool. So I get a little bit emotional, but I just feel that we need to notice what's being done right in our district. And our early childhood family centers, Full Day K now, phenomenal. And my Gracie is just as good as any number, because what she remembers solidly and happily in her education is Miss Curry, and Miss Kristen, and the fabulous Patty, and all those, Cynthia, her bus driver, all those people that took really good care of her. So kudos to our early childhood staff, because it's really a phenomenal program, and we need to notice these things.
Thank you.
Pam, thank you for the great report. One comment, I want a dinosaur puppet. I'll tell you what happened, Paul, has a dinosaur puppet.
We could use that at school board meetings.
That's exactly what I'm saying. Yeah, thank you, Paul. But seriously, my question is, that's more of a clarification, and if you don't know, I think the, where students can go off and work by themselves and kind of take a break, that's the student's choice, correct?
Yeah.
I just wanted to be clear, because people were confused, that's a student's choice.
I mean, I think it's both. If a teacher notices that a student might need a minute and over, they might make a recommendation to go over into this corner, which has those, I think they're all different, but I know that some of them have those bubble things that you turn over, and you can watch the time, fidgets to play with, just pictures on the wall, you can do yoga, there's all kinds. So it is a choice for students to go whenever they need, but I also think that it's a place, a nicer place than sitting in a chair if you are told to go to the break station. I think it's a change in what it used to be, where you'd go sit in a chair and take a minute. Now you have like things to help you take that minute.
And that's perfect. Thank you for the clarification. That's what I was trying to get across. Thank you, Pam.
So there's no question that our school district, we have some work to do. And we all know that. We're all sitting in this room, we all know that we've known. But if you want to come to an Instructional Committee meeting at some point, and walk out of there just with a big smile on your face and your head held high because of the, just the wonderful things that also happen in the Concord School District, please take some time and come. They're from 5:30 to about 7:00, but you can get the gist of it from the first few minutes that you come in. Each month, each time that we meet, it's about something that's going on in this district with regard to instruction. And to hear about the family centers, the preschools, and the Full Day K results the other night was such an island in the stream that we needed the other night. I think we all walked out of there with our heads held pretty high for the first time in a while, and so I would encourage you to come to an instruction meeting at some point. Thanks.
Thank you, and thank you, Pam. And I agree, after all of the challenge that we went through with Full Day K, going to that meeting and seeing those results, that this was really delivering what we had wanted in terms of being a play-based curriculum, but also truly developing, you know, delivering the results that we had hoped for in terms of the destruction. Really powerful. Any other comment or question about the Instructional Committee meeting? So our next agenda item is the proposed calendar of meetings, and we know that there are some proposed changes. We wanted to have the addition of the meeting on October 23rd. Are there other changes that we would like to have? So again, we have tonight's meeting. Next Monday is Columbus Day, there is no school. We have a City and Community Relations Committee meeting on the 16th. We have another Communications and Policy meeting on October 21st, and we'll continue the work that we've been doing with our policies. We're adding a Finance Committee meeting on the 23rd to prepare for our very large and significant meeting on the 28th, at which we will have our final vote on the budget. So that will be a big night, as Mrs. Hoadley reminded us. So November, we've got our monthly meeting on the 4th. Election Day is on the 5th. Then we have our Instructional Committee meeting on the 13th. We may add other meetings in November, but it's looking pretty light right now, which would be nice. And again, as a reminder, on the 4th, we'll have our student representatives from Concord High School joining us, and they always do a great job of doing a presentation on happenings at the high school, so we really welcome that. Okay. Any comments or questions on the calendar? So our next agenda item is public comment on any subject. So if there are folks who would like to come forward and comment, we would welcome that, and please do sign in and identify yourself. If you could grab the microphone, Dan, I think it's over there. And we'll have Matt do the five-minute thing again, if you don't mind.
Hi, everybody. My name is Dan Habib, I live here in Concord. I am the father of two boys, one who graduated from Concord High and one who's still in the system at Concord High, still in school. Thank you for the long days, long nights, hard work you've been putting in. I know this is not easy and a lot of stress. I appreciate the acknowledgement, there's a lot of work to do. And I have more questions, I guess, than I have statement right now. So I've got a bunch of questions that I could either, you could either try and answer right away within five minutes, or I could just put them out there and you could track them and answer them. But let me just start, you can decide. So the big questions I have is, you alluded to the second report that's going to be coming out. Do we have any timeline for when that's going to be in your hands?
We don't. I'm looking at Attorney Bennett. We had hoped to get it last week, but I think it may be a little bit, so I don't want to promise anything.
Okay.
But we definitely will let people know if we have a definite timeframe. You know, one of the things that we're really trying to do is to keep people apprised as to where we are in the process, even when we can't share things.
Okay. So is it being written by Attorney Perkins in a way that's definitively going to be released to the public?
That is the intention, yes.
Okay. So it focuses on policies and practices, policies that were followed, not followed, practices that have been improved, but I guess it's unclear to me and maybe to other people in the room, is it going to also give us a real detailed look without implicating, without violating the laws you talked about earlier about how the Howie Young situation happened? What happened? How it happened? Who was responsible? You know, I'm not looking, you know, even though I have a very personal stake in this and that my son was taught by Howie Young for six years, I'm not looking for vengeance, I'm just looking for accountability. And I think if that's not in that report, number two, the public's not going to be satisfied. The public's not going to be able to move on unless we really understand how this happened. So you may not know that yet, because you haven't seen the report, but are you willing to go back to Attorney Perkins and say, listen, we need more information, we need you to write a customized report that really explains what happened, how it happened, and who through either actions or inactions may have played a role in this? Because I think what we can never forget is the devastating impact on the students that were affected by Howie Young, the lifelong devastating traumatic impact that he caused to students, to their families, to many tangential people. And again, I think that the public needs to understand how this happened.
And I don't have an answer, we haven't seen it yet, but clearly, we understand that there is this need for this conversation with the community, and we are hearing your comments, and we will do what we can, can't promise.
Sure.
Yep.
And I'm just brushing on, because I want to meet my timeline. Has the committee, has the board decided whether they're going to turn over the initial report in a private confidential way to the police or the Department of Education?
So I think maybe Attorney Bennett can speak to that, or perhaps not, but as he indicated, just given the legal, the legal framework, it's kind of an all or nothing. If it's turned over, it is then -- If it's turned over, it is then, it becomes public. So I think that that is a question really that is bound by the legal constraints associated with the report.
So if they subpoenaed it, it might have to be turned over?
That would be a separate from the volunteer.
Okay. So another question then is, is there any, how will you know when is the decision going to be made in terms of superintendent Forreston and Principal Sick is future in the district and any other personnel decisions you have to make? What's the deciding factor for you? What's the timeline to make those decisions?
I don't know. Again, I defer to Attorney Bennett if there's anything we can share on that, but I don't know that there is at the moment.
Okay. And I'm sorry, rushing, but if one concern I have is that there were people on the school board and the school district that knew some very serious allegations about Howie Leong way back in December and didn't report, you know, at a time when maybe some young people could have been saved from more trauma. And I'm a little concerned that it's possible that people on the school board knew that. So I guess I would want to know kind of either unequivocally, there was nobody on the school board had any indication that Howie Leong was doing some really damaging things back in December, or if there was some knowledge of that, that those people who accused themselves from decisions about the report's release. Because I think there's a really potential inherent conflict of interest if somebody's being implicated in some way in the report and then deciding about what's released. You'd have to answer that unless you want to, but that's...
I don't know that we can answer it now, but boy, I think we'll be able to answer that in the near future.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
And just a couple last things. I worked on the MOU, I did some work with some other people in the room and with the Disability Rights Center, not in a legal capacity, but they just gave us some informal perspective on strengthening the MOU. And I don't want that to get lost in the process, the memorandum of understanding between the police. So I hope that somebody's moving that ahead and keeping that on the radar because there were some really simple issues around simple assault and discretionary reporting to the police. And then the last thing I would say is you reported, you gave us some really detailed and impressive information about the training that's being done in the school with students, with staff. I'm a parent and I haven't heard any of that before. So I think that would be something worth sharing with the community, all these things that are happening. And I want my, to know that my son Samuel has options for reporting. I wasn't aware of any of those things, even at the high school where he is right now. So that would be a really important communication to develop, I think, for the families. So sorry to throw it all out there. I hope there's continued conversation on these items. Sure.
Thank you very much. And on the MOU, that conversation is ongoing as well. So thank you for reminding us of that.
Hi, my name is Jessica Thompson, and I have two kids in the district. One's in middle school and one is in high school. I want to go back to the coaches nominations. This might be a really obvious answer, but why are we approving coaches for fall sports when the season's already begun and just about over? And shouldn't we be focusing on the staff or the coaches that will be coming in for the winter sports?
That is a good question. I think probably at our next meeting, we will be approving the winter sports nominations. I think that these particular coaches were ones that came in later in the process, and so we're going through the process of approving them now. Is that correct, Mr. Perkins?
I had a feeling it was a no-brainer answer.
Yep, it's okay.
And back to the preschool and the instructional committee. I work in the preschool right now at Beaver Meadow, and both my kids went through the preschool at Beaver Meadow, both reverse mainstream and typical, and they are vastly underfunded and vastly understaffed. The ratio of kids who need one-on-ones and the one-on-ones that are in the district, they don't meet. And that's why I'm there as a substitute. I've had lots of years of practice with preschool, so that's why I'm there. I know it's hard to get people in the door to begin with, but we really need to start focusing on that because these kids are being left unattended when they really should have a one-on-one and it's in their IEP. And Ms. Patty still loves you.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Tony Shinella, and I'll keep this brief, and let's see if I can talk and chew gum at the same time. One of the difficult things about being a journalist in this community, especially if you have kids in the school system, is that you have kids in the school system, you pay taxes to the school system, and in my case, I'm a product of the school system. So it's very hard to balance out the needs of my editor, as an editor, writing and covering the school district and not wanting to jump on, frankly, it's the city council too, I can say that. So, but every once in a while, I allow myself to bend the rules when something comes up. In the case of a recent or a few years ago city council meeting, they had all of their 76 documents in separate PDFs. And after three years of requesting them to be put into a single PDF so we can all scroll along, I finally went up to the board and said, "I don't normally talk, but I want to say this." So no disrespect to the attorney, Attorney Bennett. So just, let me preface by, so I've been at this 27 years, two different states, close to 20 different communities. I have a wall full of awards, and that's not to brag, but I can tell you that I bat about 350 against attorneys on right-to-know, which means seven or six and a half times I strike out and the other three and a half times I get on base. No disrespect to any of you, I'm going to talk in generalities about right-to-know. Personnel provision is done to basically keep the public from seeing things and to insulate you all from having to make very difficult decisions about what we know. So I'm going to walk through the law for just a quick second, and I'm going to look at Matt when I get close to five minutes and I'll stop. But you have, I want you to really look at this differently because I know the Concord Monitor has a rookie theory, right? Yes, they are. Concord Monitor has a great attorney, Bill Chapman, who does really great work, but is really expensive, right? And I know I've got a fleet full of attorneys in New York City waiting to come into this city to break this case open because they've already seen my numbers on my stories and they're going, "What the hell is going on?" And I say, "Yeah, my kids are there too." And my child was a, Howie Leong was my child's math prep teacher, and no one from the district bothered to call either my wife or I to tell us about this. I found out about this case and told a few of you ahead of time about this case that it was coming because I found out about it when I was working at the DOE. Let me get to the personnel provisions for a second. 91A-5, Section 4, records pertaining to, so here's the exemptions of, this is exemption, personnel exemption. This is where, again, not school board members, this is where officials hide from the press and the public, okay? Here are some of the provisions in 4. Records pertaining to internal personnel practices, so that doesn't count this, that counts how do we decide who we're going to hire. Confidential, commercial, or financial information. So you remember the Department of Employment Security building that wasn't sold? We didn't know what the negotiations were going on, right? They shouldn't do that in front of me or us, they should do that in private. That's what that's about. Things about testing, some other things. And here's where the personnel provision comes in. And personnel, medical, welfare, library user, videotape, sale and rental, other files through disclosure would constitute invasion of privacy, period. That's the blanket statement that you use, meaning all officials, not just you guys, but everybody, uses to insulate personnel decisions from the public and the press. The key point is, would constitute invasion of privacy. So if I want to rent something at the library, you should not know what it is. It's my personal business what I rent at the library. A personnel matter who was involved in this investigation, who didn't call parents, didn't notify other people, knew what the code of conduct and code of ethics were and didn't do anything, there is no privacy there. They made a mistake. And I'm going to take it one step further, okay? The second sentence of this provision, and these are the only personnel provisions. Without otherwise compromising the confidentiality of the files noting in this paragraph, shall prohibit a public body, I'm sorry, nothing in this paragraph, shall prohibit a public body or agency from releasing information relative to the health and safety from investigation files on a limited basis to persons whose health or safety may be affected. If you don't understand what's gone on and what we all, some of us already know, and what you already know, and what all kinds of people who are sharing their secrets with all kinds of journalists don't already know, there are safety issues and there are health issues because, as you already said, that's your primary role, is educating and making sure the kids are safe. So you, as a board, can, no offense to Mr. Bennett, ignore his advice and say, "We have a release provision by which we can do the following: redact the names of anybody who's innocent so they're not targeted or humiliated. FERPA says you can't use child identification, and you can't do that. Personal school records of pupils are exempt from the right-to-know law," which means that you can release, you can redact all of those provisions, and you can go back and you can give us not a great report about all the great things you're doing and the things that, but an accountability report, as Dan said, that gives us information that says who did what and why. Now, do I have one more minute? Three seconds, okay. And I'm going to tell you why, okay, very quickly. Because bad teachers get away with it, and then they go to other districts, and then they do it again. And I'm not going to name names, but you all know a lot of them. Barbara and I at Concord High School went to school with a lot of them. And I can tell you from an example where I got a call from a woman in Maine who said, "Hey, you did a story about such and such a teacher five years ago." And I said, "Yes, his information's been taken down, he resolved all of his issues. He liked to beat his wife when he drank, was arrested three times and liked to leer at young girls at Concord High School, and you didn't fire him. None of you, most of you weren't there. You didn't fire him. He got a settlement, he went away." Well, he's up near the Canadian border teaching now, and this woman calls me out of nowhere because this teacher is now leering at his daughter. Now, he's not doing anything, he's just making the girl feel uncomfortable. But you know what? Jason Blair, who plagiarized articles for the New York Times, isn't a journalist anymore. Sometimes people who are teachers who do bad things shouldn't be teachers anymore. And there is nothing in this right-to-know law that says you can't, as a board, make the decision. And we'll save a lot of money because you're going to spend my money to fight me and the monitor and everybody else to get what we should rightfully have. So that's, I'm out of time, right? I'm out of time, okay. So, so please, so please, let's go back, make a third report of the first report that really tells us what we need to know, and get the attorney to read the law the way that people should be reading it. We deserve a right-to-know, and I shouldn't have to sue for the damn thing. I'm paying for it.
Yes.
Sorry.
Caroline Gilder sleeve again. I just want to back up, Tony, and say absolutely that taxpayers are paying for it, give it to them. You've paid $500 an hour for an attorney using taxpayer dimes. The taxpayers own that report. Give it to the Attorney General, give it to the police, give it to the press, and give it to the public. Don't wait because you're going to get sued. And that will take more taxpayer dollars, and taxpayers are going to get furious. So either get sued or give the report immediately.
Absolutely.
There's no choice. The other thing I brought up on the last meeting, September 3rd, you need to hire a compliance officer, just like St. Paul's school did. Do it now before you're sued, and you're made to do it. Be proactive, protect the students, and please do it now. Do the right thing. Get that compliance officer in here and uncover everything dirty and corrupt that has gone on and fix it. Thank you.
I just wanted to address Jack Dunn over here, who's on his cellphone or mouse. I just wanted to make sure that you didn't think we forgot about you and your lack of credentials at this meeting because nobody spoke about it yet. So you have worked at your position for seven years without credentials. You were hired for $5,000 more than the person who held your position before you, who was credentialed and worked there for seven years. What kind of backdoor deal did you get? That's what I'd like to know.
Amen.
Yep. You were hired for $105,000 a year, $5,000 more a year than the person who held the position seven years, and you're not even credentialed to hold your position. Are you going to resign?
You do not need to answer my question, but thank you for your comment.
Lastly, Jack Dunn, I do not want my tax dollars to go to another paycheck for you until you get credentialed or you need to resign. But no more corruption on the taxpayers' dime.
I'm a resident of Concord, have two children who have gone through the school district. I'm here, I did write a letter to the board and talked about the sense of community that the school brings to the community. It's just part of, it's a major part of the city. One of the, one of the things, as I came to the meeting and tried to understand what we would, there were not going to be all the answers today, obviously. But when you think about it, the school board and the school district has an attorney representing the school board and the school district. And he's providing you with the best information for you, the district. The community is on the other side of that equation. And as you hear, people get very angry about the right-to-know and releasing a report. When reports are written by attorneys, it's quite common to have four versions of the report. It's not, it's not common to have a report and say, "That's it." You're getting another version. You could very easily get that third version that provides answers to the community. Now, I understand he's your attorney, but you have to understand where we're sitting as a community. Thank you.
Didn't plan to speak tonight, but my name is John Cassidy. Lived in Concord for 77 years. I would be remiss if I didn't take a couple of minutes to commend the board. Most of you who weren't even here when these allegations and problems started, they go way back to Christine Rathen, maybe even before that, but a lot of you are brand new to the board, and I just want to commend you on all the flak you've taken, the peacefulness you've taken on the chin. It hasn't been easy. Nobody would like to sit there and take what you've taken. I've been on the committee since the summer, and I left the committees more frustrated than I went into, but I'm not an educator. I was, I saw more smoke than I did fire, but I believe in the process. The thing we've got to remember, we're a democracy, right? And part of that hat means that we're still a democracy. So I do want to commend, and I want to commend the Concord Monitor, the reporters, they've taken a lot of heat too, and Leo Willingham in particular has taken, I think, heat and done a hell of a job. And Jen Patterson, you've... And Jen Patterson, you've kept everything peaceful tonight, it's been very peaceful. We haven't needed Officer Hester to intervene. Mark, thank you for being here, but the process will continue. The people behind me have a right to whatever they say, we have a right to who we vote for. So I just want to commend the Monitor and the school board as you all sit here tonight. And we will get to the bottom of this. Laws were broken, there's no question about it. People didn't act in a professional manner. I've called the teachers and administrators and haven't got a response in a timely fashion. That frustrates me as a taxpayer because I'm paying their salaries. Anyway, my three minutes are up, Jack, right? So I've got plenty of time, but I don't have the IQ that most of these people have back here and I don't purport to have it. I took the entrance exam at Concord High way back and flunked it three times and had to go to the Catholic schools. There was no room for me at Bishop Brady. So anyway, God bless you all, keep everything fair, above board, be transparent and run the course, everything will come out the way it's supposed to. Thank you.
Thank you.
I forgot to say 98% of our Concord employees in the school district are fantastic. I'm not a great public speaker, but they're really good. I was at a meeting last summer when I was corrected by a teacher, after she's sitting in this audience, she said, "No, no, John, you got it wrong. It's not 98%, it's 99.5." So she has the facts better than I do, I guess I don't have those facts. But anyway, we have a great school district, I've watched over the years, I'm vested because I have two grandchildren. That's the only reason I'm here, not because I have a high IQ. I'm here because I have a sixth grader and a ninth grader and I really care what happens to these kids. Some of the stuff that's happened, I'm not happy with, but we're going to get to the bottom. So thank you for everything. Okay. Finish this. Yep.
I don't, not really meant for you.
Oh, no, I drank it up. Hi, I'm Brian Harlow, I'm a resident of Concord. I was going to, wasn't going to speak, but I just want to bring it back to what Mr. Crush said initially, you were into the meeting, that it's all for the safety of the kids. But I want to piggyback on that and clarify that, sorry about that. To clarify that for me, I think for Mr. Crush and for many of us, that it's a lot harder to, in quotes, "get it right" and get the safety right when you're the parent or guardian of someone who needs you for their activities of daily living, someone who has a one-on-one to get them to a level where they can learn how other kids learn. Howie Leung predators aren't wired to go after kids who are varsity athletes. Do they get assaulted? Of course, but they're much easier to prey upon, kids who won't be believed, kids who were English as a second language learners, kids who already come from broken homes. Those are the kids we need to get this right for. Yeah, we need to get it right for all kids, but I didn't want that to be forgotten, that, and the thing is, those kids, and I know those kids, matter of fact, I, one of those kids is my hero and she forgot her lunch today in the second grade. So I brought it in, they know me, and it just so happened that they were having lunch. And I knew where I was coming tonight here and to see her with her one-on-one, it's, no parent wants to find out when their child is 35, 42, the average age of reporting in their late 40s, that something really horrific happened when they were in high school, grammar school, a coach, playing field, whatever it may have been. But there's some kids, Mr. Leung knew them well, who can't report. That can't be forgotten. And I'm looking right now at the board and law averages says, since it's one in three women before the age of 18, well, no sexual violence and one in whatever it is for men, it varies greatly, but, so three of you already know that, which is why I think that that's important, you know, to remember. And I don't know what my time is, but I couldn't leave here without saying that we're getting it right for kids who on a daily basis know far greater challenges than many of us in the room have ever faced. And a lot of us walk those challenges with them. So when we get this right, we're not going to get a second pitch, we have to do this now. And I do, I congratulate all of you for, you know, for the dinosaur puppets and all that kind of stuff, but this, this has to be done right. And I'm not into punitive measures, but if somebody can't do their job, find somebody who can, you know, because I don't want, I don't want. So, and when it comes to the New Hampshire Coalition Against Domestic and Sexual Violence and in this Ketchman area, it's the crisis center. We, you know, we all know the number there and we know how to get in touch with them, whether it's social media, just calling, please utilize them still. It wasn't just for this process, the ongoing process, valuable resources there. Lynda Douglas was incredible, I heard feedback from so many teachers, but also some of them in this very building, you're wondering if it wasn't us that messed up, why were we at the training? And I agree with the gentleman, I don't know statistics on what the good employees are, what the bad employees, but I know that everyone cares about the kids, but please get it right, you know? If you need any kind of help from the community, I know the community would bend over backwards, especially us that know what it's like to have kids that have great challenges. Thank you.
I wasn't prepared to speak, I should just write my name first. Sure. Or at the end. All right, I wasn't planning on speaking and I just, a few things keep going through my mind. I know you have your attorneys and the teachers of unions and all the right to know.
If you could just state your name.
Oh, yeah, my name's Elizabeth Young, I live in Concord. I have a daughter in high school here. And I just wonder, where's our right to know? Just simplistically, you know, I'm not speaking to any of the legal part, I know you have to protect the students and some staff, but the parents have a right to know what happened. The parents whose children were in this man's classroom and saw on the news, on their phones. I can still picture myself sitting on the bus coming from Doctors in Boston with my daughter and the chatter went around school and so someone sent her information and I looked on the news and I said, "Oh, look, you know, it's a teacher, said it's my teacher, Mom." And I mean, I can still picture that picture of him and it's just terrible. So I know you have to move past this, but I think that we have a right to know. I think that you're being protected by an attorney because you're protecting somebody or something or some information that you don't want the public to know about. So, I mean, I know you're in a tough spot and you all are doing a lot of great work and, you know, thank you for all the work you're doing. I'm sure this is a really tough job right now for everybody, but I don't think anyone's going to be happy unless we know how that situation happened when, you know, administrators had information, but our children were in that classroom. So we don't have a right to know? So, I mean, I guess that's all I want to say is, I don't think anyone's going to be satisfied until we get the information from that report that you can release and the public does have the right to know that. That's right.
Thank you. And we hear you and if you understand. Thank you to everyone. We really, really appreciate hearing from you very much. I really appreciate all of the ongoing engagement, the continued work going forward. We do understand this is a long process, we do understand we have a long way to go and we're going to continue to do that. So thank you for being part of this conversation. I think, so we had amended to add a non-public session. I think what I would like to do, if the board is amenable to staying a little longer, I don't think it will be long, is to make the motion to go into non-public and then take a brief recess, maybe 15 minutes, and then reconvene a non-public session.
Get them out of there.
So.
Should be, should be a shame.
So I'm going to make a motion to go into non-public session under RSA, if the run RSA pulled up because I was following Mr. Shinella. I'm going to make the motion to go into non-public session under RSA 91A3, Roman numeral 2A, purposes of the personnel actions. And is there a second to that motion?
Check.
So, seconded by Tom Frodo and I'm asking for a roll call vote.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Tom.
Tom?
Aye.
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 Aye again.
Okay, so we are in non-public session.